Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Atomo City Council Meeting. It's five thirty, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. I really appreciate people coming out tonight on a cold winter night. Hopefully, our meeting's going to be fairly short tonight. We don't have a whole lot of business to go over, but what we do have to go over is important. So if everybody would go ahead and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Galloway, here. Councilmember Hoffman, here. Councilmember McIntyre, here. Councilmember Cavendish, Councilmember Reed, here. Mayor Johnson, here.
The next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed.
Abstention number six.
Okay, before we go further on our agenda, part of the consent agenda tonight was to approve the proclamation for slavery and human trafficking prevention month. January is Human Trafficking Prevention Month. So I went ahead and did a proclamation, and Patty Hannah is here tonight from Grace Methodist Church. She's done an outstanding job of educating people in her church and in the community on human trafficking. Some of you might not know that we also have a Waplo County Coalition Against Human Trafficking that also meets every month, and we're also trying to do a fair amount of community education because a lot of people don't understand what human trafficking is. There's sex trafficking, there's also labor trafficking, and unfortunately, we've had both of those things occurring at Tamaulipas in the last two years. In fact, we just had a sex trafficking case get identified this week by our police department. So it is something that everybody needs to be aware of. So I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation. I'll have Patty come up and present it to her, and I think she might have a couple of words that she'd like to say as well. This is a proclamation for slavery and human trafficking prevention month, January 2025. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right to freedom and added the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal. Whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. Whereas this heinous crime is found within our own community, whereas the Island Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery has been working since 2005 to abolish all forms of human trafficking through education, prevention, volunteerism, advocacy, and collaboration. Whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. Whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. Whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young people from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and pornography, and by becoming more aware of the problems and possible solutions. Now therefore, I, Richard W. Johnson, Mayor of the city of Atomo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2025 as slavery and human trafficking prevention month and encourage all of our citizens to become more informed on this growing problem, to be diligent and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all forms in our community. If you see something that doesn't look right, take action and call the National Human Traffic Hotline at 888-373-7888. For more information and resources about trafficking in Iowa, go to the Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery website at www.iowaahd.org. Signed, Richard W. Johnson, Mayor. So Patty, if you'd like to come up. I'm very proud to present this to you and the people that you've worked with to help do a good job of educating our community on human trafficking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm Patty Hannah. I'm a member of Grace Methodist Church here in town, and I started this about three years ago. I had a program out there, and then just in December, I had another program. And at that time, I became a volunteer with the Lighthouse Foundation out of Hella, which Heather is a co-founder of it, so I will let Heather speak. And I thank everybody for acknowledging that we do have a problem. Thank you all for having us here tonight. My name is Heather Benemer Glenn, and I am a co-founder of the Lighthouse Foundation. Brittany and I founded the Lighthouse Foundation this fall of 2024. The Lighthouse Foundation is a nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering survivors of abuse and human trafficking on their journey to healing and independence. The foundation provides essential support and resources to helping survivors build their lives and to bring education and awareness to our schools, community programs, and public agencies. Our mission is to create a safe and supportive community where survivors of human trafficking can access the resources they need to thrive, break free, and reclaim their future, to give them a glimmer of hope and a voice. When Brittany and I first started thinking about what we could do and where the need was most great, we thought education. Let's bring awareness to everyone around. Our first goal was to bring the Right to Stand curriculum to the schools across Iowa and the community groups and public agencies. Human trafficking isn't just something you see in the news. It is all around us. It's in our schools, it's in our churches, it's in our malls, and it's in social media. It's in our children's phones, it's in our backyards, and the more we educate and the more we have awareness around us, the more we can bring it to the people we love, the better decisions we can make, and the better hope for our future for our children, our grandchildren, and everyone around us. Would you please stand with us and be a voice for the voiceless? Be support for those around you, lend a hand for someone reaching out, be eyes for someone looking. If you see something, say something. If there's anything that you take from us tonight or from me, it's when you see something, say something. That is the most important message. You never know if it's big or small. What you may see, if it's unfounded, it's unfounded. We will be having a presentation on January 11th of 2025. Everybody wants to know what can we do. That night, we will have various presentation speakers giving information on the medical side of human trafficking, what you can see, resources, cyber information, and things like that. It will be held in Hella at First Church at 6:00 p.m. through 8:00 p.m. It's a free event, and we would love to see anybody there as much as possible. We are lighting the way for freedom and hope for all those survivors of human trafficking and abuse. Feel free to reach out and contact us if you'd like to know more, share your story, or get involved. Brittany and I thank you again for signing this proclamation and being a part of the journey to stopping human trafficking.
Thank you very much. Please Chief, I don't want to put you on the spot. Do you have anything you want to add or say about human trafficking, since we have had some of that in our community?
Just note, education in any of these matters is first and foremost, and unfortunately, we have had some incidents of both labor and sex trafficking in the city of Atomo, but we've been able to bring those individuals to justice, and hopefully, we can continue to do that, but we need to help the community still.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes.
The next agenda item is our city administrator's report to council and the citizens of Atomo. I'll turn it over to Phil Raff, our city administrator.
All right, thank you, Honorable Mayor. I think everybody up here knows, and people, members of the community know, that we had a long, tedious search for the position. I want to thank the members of the department, specifically Pat Short, who filled in that interim role during that process. It has been quite some time. I think Pat served in that interim role from August of '23 until just recently, when we have been able to successfully replace Sean Canto into the fire chief position. And I'm going to have him come up and say a few words, introduce himself to the community. And the only thing I want to say is, we've also had for a long time a resolution on the table. I'm going to ask tonight to have that removed from the table and defeated, respectfully. With that, I will turn my time over to Sean Canto to give a brief introduction of himself, and he wants to mention about his first few days on the job.
Thank you, Chris Raff. Good evening, Council Mayor Johnson. Excited to be here. A little bit about me, I've been in fire service for 33 years, and shall be my 34th, and I come from a fire service family, which means my dad, stepdad, brother, brother-in-law have all been in the fire service. So my last 10 years prior to coming here to the city of Atomo, I was fire chief for a suburban department outside Metro Detroit. Prior to that, I worked in the city, right outside the city of Louisville, and I've been a chief officer for, since 2005. Looked at retiring, but I kind of decided I wanted to get back into it and come to an organization that we can improve and be better. And so how I make decisions within an organization are based on three things, and they're very simple. What is best for the community, what is best for the department, and what is best for the member. And that's how I make decisions. And so the Atomo Fire Department, as Phil said, I've only been here really truly for not even a week, I think a week now, maybe, might be a week, but we're going to evaluate everything, everything within the organization that we do, our service level, how we operate, our policies and procedures, our training. We are going to evaluate everything, and then things that need to be updated and take the Atomo Fire Department to the next level and serve the citizens with the most efficient and effective service that we can provide to the community, and looking at, again, as I said, everything, because the fire service is never changing. The fire service that my father started in the late '60s is not the fire service of 2025. It continues to change, and the service model of what we do has to continue to change. If we don't change that service model, we're not going to be successful. And seconds count, minutes count, and what we do in public service is the same as with the police department. And so my goal is to become the premier organization in Iowa that when people talk about Atomo, they talk about the Atomo Fire Department and what we're accomplishing as an organization. So as we go through this process, one thing that I will bring to city council, it won't happen probably for until next year, year and a half or so, but we will put a strategic plan together as an organization that is your roadmap, that guides you where you're going to take an organization, and that's that roadmap for the future. Without that roadmap, it becomes a run of a ship. And we're going to, I have my deputy chief here, the senior who's acting in the interim position, but again, preparing our people's succession plan, preparing them to take the next step, and we're in to be part of that organization. So I look forward to being here, look forward to being part of the Atomo community. My office door is always open, but I'm going to look at the organization from the 10,000-foot view all the way down to the one-foot view, and we're going to take this organization on a journey, and I hope that city council will be part of that journey for us. Thank you. It's great.
Thank you. And I understand you have a staff of presidents in the community. Was that, you have a staff of presidents here in the community as well? All right. I would like to see that, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Mayor, prior to us moving on, I would move to remove that item from the table.
Second.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes. If we will vote on that at the end of the meeting, or do you want to vote on it now? Go ahead and do it now? Okay. So Resolution Number 147, 2024, approving an agreement with McManus Associates Incorporated for professional consulting services. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 147, 2024.
Actually, the new recommendation is to defeat. Or my current request is to defeat it.
Is there a motion?
To make the motion to defeat it?
You make a motion to approve, and then you vote against it.
Okay, that's what I thought you were doing. I read it the way it came.
I just want to clarify, I mentioned in the discussion.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? So move. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway, no. Councilmember Hoffman, no. Councilmember McIntyre, no. Councilmember Reed, no.
Thank you. We've got that taken care of now. Did you have anything else?
I do not.
The next item is where I ask if any of the citizens and constituents tonight would like to speak on any of our agenda items on our agenda. I don't have any papers up here, but sometimes people don't fill them out. So anybody want to speak on any of the agenda items tonight? Okay. We don't have any public hearings, so we'll skip public hearings and we'll move to ordinances.
Ordinance number 3237, 2025, amending the code of ordinances by changing the zoning classification of property known as 2411 North Port from C3 commercial mixed use to C2 community commercial district, and the property known as 2415 North Port from R1 single-family residential district to C2 community commercial district. Recommendation passed to second consideration of ordinance number 3237, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Jake.
All right, thank you, Mayor, your duty council. The city has received a petition requesting to purchase the city-owned parcels at 2411 and 2415 North Court for use as a car wash. The car wash use requires a C2 zoning, and the petition to purchase would be subject to rezoning. The city is initiating a proposed rezoning of the property at 2411 North Court from C3 commercial mixed zone to C2 community commercial district, and the zoning at 215 North Port from R1 to C2. The parcels are directly south of North Ivy, prior to North Ivy, and have been all around the city since 2015. At the planning zoning commission meeting on December 2nd, 2024, the commission recommended it be rezoned, and today, we've not had any.
This is the second consideration of this ordinance. Does council have any questions for Jake?
Just as a reminder, how much are they purchasing it for?
Um, I don't believe I have that in my notes. Do you have that?
Thanks, I'm not going to look.
Yeah, I don't have that in my notes. I can be back with you.
Has anyone talked to the neighbors right there?
So we sent notices out to the land property that had been assigned, and I have received a name home, my department has received a name home.
I know Zach has said that this goes through. They actually have to make sure that there's a barrier between their residential property and the car wash. They have to make sure that there's certain distance and stuff to make sure there's not any.
Like, like, we're in some of these as well.
Council have any other questions for Jake?
I'm showing the purchase price at $5,000 if you vote lots.
Thank you.
Okay, if not, Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes.
Hearing as we, seeing as we have not heard anything from others, I would move to waive their consideration.
Second.
Okay, does everybody know what they're voting on? We're raising the third consideration and passing an adopting ordinance 3237, 2025.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes.
Yes, thanks. Pardon?
Well, there it's taken.
Yes, there was.
McIntyre was the second on that one.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to resolutions.
Resolution number 1, 2025, approving revision number 1 to the Atomo Parks Master Plan. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 1, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second. Gene Ratch, here, our parks director, I believe, is going to discuss this.
Okay, thank you, your honor. The Atomo Park Master Plan was produced about three years ago. Since then, many new projects are underway or have changed locations, such as the tennis courts at the high school, the legacy field soccer complex, the indoor sports facility in Sycamore Park, and the proposed skate park. Because of these changes, it was time to revise the Atomo Park Master Plan. The revision was done by City Public Information Officer Travis Lawrence and approved by the Atomo Parks Advisory Board at the meeting on December 10th, 2024. The revised plan is attached, and the revised plan will be used as a guide for parks projects in the future.
Does council have any questions for Gene?
I would just say I appreciate the update to it. I know in the past, we've done plans, and they've kind of sat for a while while we've changed things, and things haven't been updated. So I do appreciate the two of you working together with the Parks Board to update this and keep it current.
Any other questions from council? Gene, you have anything else you'd ever show on here?
No, that's it. Obviously, the image on the right is the updated plan, and we felt we needed it updated to make it more accurate, so that we're following a plan that's actually useful and will guide us in the future, especially with the ball lines. There were too many ball lines in the previous plans.
Yeah, there's been a lot of positive things happening over there in that part of town, so it's good, like Councilman Galloway said, to make sure that it's updated and people are currently aware of what's being planned, because it's had several revisions since the original plan came out, but they're all good things. Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes. Resolution number 2, 2025, accepting the low bid and awarding the contract for the Atomo Cemetery Office and Maintenance Building Project to RG Construction in the amount of Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 2, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Gene.
Will and Hoffman Architects and the city of Atomo staff advertised online for this project, and five bids were received. The bids were opened on the separate fault at 2:00 p.m. The bid tabbed is attached. The low bid was from RG Construction of Atomo for $1,520,000. City staff recommends accepting the bid from RG Construction for this project. The bid from RG Construction was approved by the Atomo Cemetery Board of Trustees at the meeting on January 2nd, 2025. There was $1,875,000 budget for this project in the CIP.
Council have any questions for Gene?
No, I would just like to point out that I'm happy that it's a local contractor that's going to be doing the work, so thank you.
I would have to.
I'm glad to see this come to fruition, because the old office building over at the cemetery is not ADA accessible. There's a lot of issues. They don't have enough storage and room to put all their equipment, so this facility is going to be a huge benefit to the Atomo Cemetery staff in the future, so I'm really excited that this is finally going to happen.
It's going to be a big improvement, too, and Gene, you and I talked, and glad they're getting a safe, good, you know, nice environment, you know, to work in, because those were some of my biggest concerns, but I'm really excited about this project.
It's been a long time coming. Okay, if there's no other questions for Gene, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes.
Thanks, Gene.
Resolution number 3, 2025, providing for the financial support of the Area 15 Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year 2526. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 3, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? So move. Second. Okay, Phil, I believe you're going to take this one.
Yes, this is an annual request made from Area 15, as far as statutory rates is in accordance with the 1973 Articles of Agreement, Area 15 Regional Planning Commission. City is responsible for 54 cents per capita. That would equate to a contribution of $13,725.66 for the period covered July 1, '25 through June 30, '26. Those will actually be in the next fiscal year's budget, but in order for us to be able to plan for that, it's brought up at this point.
Council, have any questions for Phil?
I just, so Phil, you were not at our last meeting, and when Chris Vowes was here and presented, and one of the things, one of the questions that I had asked was, just like when we're working with you and moving forward, do you present information to us? Do you, you know, kind of like, or do we need to give you information so you can find the grants and stuff, too? And just to make sure that, you know, we're spending the money to have this relationship with them, like getting our CIP plan to them to help them look at the grant so that we can continue to get our value for the money that we're spending.
His office is still short one community planner, which is really, I'm really hopeful they'll get that filled pretty soon, because that will leave them in surmountability to do any grant writings.
I would agree with that, but I just think if we can be proactive for our plans in the coming day, getting them our plans so they can start that work.
Any other questions for Phil from council? All right, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes. Resolution number 4, 2025, providing for the financial support of the Regional Planning Affiliation, RPA 15, for fiscal year 2526. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 4, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Second. Okay, Phil.
All right, so similar to the last resolution, this one is more specific to the transportation planning and funds that are given to the area for transportation. City is estimated to receive about $626,000 in financial support. In return, the city's request to contribute proportional share, which in this case is $6,428, which is our share of the local match for the planning grant. That local match is 20% of the amount, or $28,398.
Council have any questions on this agenda item? Or Phil?
So it looks like we get about $97 back for a dollar paid, so I mean, it seems like it's a return on, a return on investment.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes. Resolution number 5, 2025, approving an agreement with Greater Atomo Partners in Progress for Pearl Level Sponsorship of the Third Annual Lean-In Conference for 2025. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number 5, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? So move. Second. Okay. Do you want to talk about this?
Again, if you want to add anything. Greater Atomo Partners in Progress is preparing to host Third Annual Lean-In Conference, which is a leadership event geared toward supporting women in leadership positions. When an event serves a public purpose, the city is able to contribute to the private sponsor. This particular event brings a variety of participants from across the region and captures a couple of the city's goals with growth and diversity. To outline the relationship between the deliverables GOPIP provides, or any public dollars contributed, a simple agreement related to the event was drafted, is attached for reference, and Mayor Johnson was. attached for reference, uh, and Mayor Johnson was requesting the city council to consider sponsorship, uh, and we had two hundred and fifty dollars towards the event, uh, which would get us, uh, name recognition for the event and sponsorship, uh, of, uh, what they're doing.
This is actually the third year for the Women's Leadership Conference that GOPIP is sponsoring, and I know last year we had some, uh, women in city government that attended the conference, and, uh, like Phil said, we always have to make sure that we meet the criteria for public purpose if we're gonna sponsor an event, but I think in this case we clearly can show that, and, uh, I requested that the city council, uh, make a good faith effort and at least try and show our support by, uh, sponsoring it at the lowest level, which is the pearl level, or two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, which isn't a lot of money, but, uh, I still think it's a good way for the city to show our support, and hopefully we'll have several, uh, uh, female supervisors and city government that'll wind up the conference and share.
My, my opinion is this is an outstanding program. I wouldn't even question the sponsorship. Uh, we actually need more events like this, so, uh, just to the rest of the council, I'm , uh, for it. I would be pro- a little more.
So I, I do have a quick question. Um, last year, weren't we included in the sponsorship because of our contract that, because of the money we already give to GOPIP, and we got tickets?
Yeah, so last year, um, we had a different, uh, funding arrangement with GOPIP, uh, and the Lean-In Conference was one of the four deliverables that they had, so we pay, if they put on the event, we paid them five thousand dollars. So they considered that sponsorship level at that point. Um, the difference between the two fifty and the five hundred here is, uh, really the only thing is, at five hundred level, you can put swag in the, the, the give out bags, and we really don't have any swag, so to speak, uh, so it'd be an extra cost on top of that. Uh, so if some, that, uh, you wanted to, you can always increase that level, and we wanted to have swag in the hoodie bags, but, uh, that was the reason for, looking at the two fifty versus five hundred, is there was no difference there. It was a good faith contribution, uh, and, and to your point, we had contributed, or we didn't have to contribute extra last year. This is in addition to our, uh, amount, so last year was forty thousand, uh, and then four different events at five thousand for a total of sixty. If they completed those, this year it moved to a flat sixty thousand, uh, without the other, uh, events or, or deliverables, uh, off to the side.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? If not, Chris will go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Resolution number six, twenty twenty-five, awarding the contracts for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at eight fourteen Wabash to Ryan Sainer of Iowa City, Iowa, in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred, which is equivalent to four thousand nine hundred for abatement and a hundred thousand for demolition. Recommendation passing to adopt resolution number six, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, Jake.
Right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the structure at eight fourteen Wabash was condemned by the board of health of the state of Atomo. Uh, we took bids until December nineteenth of twenty twenty-four. Received five demolition bids and four asbestos bids. Ryan Sainer submitted the best bid in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred for the demolition, asbestos removal, and cleanup of the lot, and the staff recommends a work in the concrete.
Is he the north person?
He's not, no, he's a contractor, forces, no. The other, the other people did bid, he was handling a little bit better, so.
Is he local?
It's not. That's what my concern is, um, and I don't, I'm not against outside, it's, it's not that, it's just that, well, I'm just a big proponent to keep everything local, um, I know with the bid structure, I understand, it's just, you know, I wanna be responsible for that money as well, I just like to keep everything local or something.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have that stipulation in our contract when we put out the bids, so you get bid on it, you have the low bid.
No, he's reading, he's reading, I'm not saying. So where's he from?
Parley.
I believe, Iowa City, yeah.
Does he have any other ties to Atomo Business?
That I don't know.
Any other questions from counsel for Jake? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Resolution number seven, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to execute Iowa D O T agreement number five twenty-three S T V G swap twenty-four for this transportation block grant program federal aid swap project. Recommendation passing to adopt resolution number seven, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Burkmire, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this agreement will formalize the federal aid agreement for the Mary Street construction project, Berry Street, Michelle Avenue. This construction project is full wood, full F P C C paving project, which also includes A E C sidewalks, for sanitary improvements and water main replacement requests by Waterworks. Uh, the estimated cost of the project is three million three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This agreement will pay up to two million eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars for construction. Uh, local funds were paid, will pay for remaining costs, estimated at four hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Uh, the D O T letting is for March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, so new constructed this summer.
Counsel, have any questions for Philip? Do they have any idea how long that's gonna take? Because that's a fairly long street that's totally tear up and redo, would be done before winter? Next winter?
And, uh, how much manpower they, they throw at it. There's also the school there, too, so there's.
Right.
Certain sequencing you have to do to, to work school, but we're planning on getting it all done in one year.
So are we gonna work with the school? Because we already know, um, traffic over there during, uh, before and after school is a nightmare, so are we gonna, do we have a plan in place to assist in, um?
Yeah, so we're, we're adding a turn lane at Berry Streets, the left turn lane, which will increase traffic flow at the intersection when school gets out, because that's the, we took the drone up there and, and videoed it for several days, coming to school and, and leaving school, and that was by far the major choke point, so.
I, I guess when I, I mean, what, during the construction, is there a plan because if parts of it are shut down?
We're gonna stage it so that this, the section from the school entrance to Berry Street is done when school is out.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Any other questions from counsel for Philip? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next will be our public forum.
We now open the public forum portion of the agenda. We invite anyone from the audience who has completed a citizen to put requests for residents, property owners, and business owners who wish to address the council on any subject, as is, as is with the earlier public comment period, at this time, we are here as a council to listen. Council cannot deliberate on any items brought to their attention during the open forum, however, they can request that your either be placed on another certain agenda or connect you with the appropriate city personnel to assist. As a reminder, city council members and city staff are accessible before and after meeting.
Okay, we have one individual that would like to speak, so at this time I'm gonna call Katie Howard up to the podium.
My name is Katie Howard. I live at eleven eleven Hamilton Street in Atomo. I'm addressing you again today regarding the no weapons policy of Bridgeview Center. Uh, we believe that policy is not in compliance with Iowa Code Section seven twenty-four twenty-eight. Bridgeview is a city-owned property. The city is a political subdivision of the state, and political subdivisions of the state of Iowa are prohibited by law from regulating firearms in conflict with, with state law. Yesterday, I had a conversation with the law branch about this situation. I do, as you may recall, I was here at the December seventeenth meeting and spoke a little bit respectfully about this issue. Um, I do understand that the city attorney is reviewing the matter and working with Bridgeview, uh, management company, however, the management company is contracted by the city and working at the behest of the city, so it can't take the blame for a policy that, uh, is forbidden to the city by law. On December seventh, Richard Rogers, volunteer lobbyist for Iowa Firearms Coalition, sent an email to the mayor and city council, or city, um, city council member, providing an in-depth review of the law. On December seventeenth, I briefly addressed the council on this issue and provided physical copies of Mr. Rogers' letter to all city council members, city attorney, mayor, city administrator, and the city clerk. That letter included an attachment, which was a copy of the court's decision on a similar situation in Monroe County in twenty twenty-one. The resolution of that case resulted in payment of one hundred thousand dollars in damages, court costs, and attorney's fees. During the twenty twenty-three legislative session, Section seven twenty-four twenty-eight, subsection A of the Iowa Code was amended and strengthened, effective January first, twenty twenty-five. The new language provides for a schedule of damages accruing daily, in amounts varying between one hundred dollars and twenty-five hundred dollars per day, for failure to remedy the situation after written notice of a violation, plus attorney's fees and court costs. Therefore, time is of the essence. You are all my neighbors, I'm a viewer, my friends. We have been hopeful that this matter would be resolved through rever, review of the pertinent sections of Iowa Code and city action to repeal the no weapons policy. The cost of the only ever remedy provided by law, which is to provide weapons screening and armed security personnel in the building, would be prohibited. I am aware of the city's financial situation, and I understand the challenge to see you faithful. We do not wish to add to that financial burden. I encourage you to remedy the situation as quickly as possible. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any non-agenda item? Jerry?
Jerry Craft at nine thirty-one West Mary Street. Uh, obviously, I live on the street where the project's been mentioned to tear it out, and I thought maybe you'd have a few handouts or something concerning the engineering plans for that, so I have no idea, the accessibility for us Northside people, how we're getting in and out, and I'm a very good concern, Matt, because just the other night I got home to them, because my name was through the hospital, and, uh, you know, I need accessibility for those sort of things. So anyway, I'm here thinking about total tear out, total re, infrastructure replacement, uh, I just don't know how big this project's gonna be, and how, and we can't go out of our backsides. We, we, we have, we depend on getting out on the Mary Street, and just how you're gonna handle that situation, the accessibility. So I'm deeply concerned about all that. Nobody's come to me and give me a handout that they're gonna be affected. My property's kinda like, my curb side and that line is not gonna come and cut a new sidewalk and take a corrupt the shawl. I mean, I've heard all types of rumors like that, that there's gonna be a trail corrupt the shawl, and plus the site, the street's gonna add a lane between east, then east, east tracks or east west tracks, or near as I can understand. And I don't know where you even know where I'm talking about right now, but that's a horseshoe that goes into Liberty School, and, uh, that's definitely gonna take a lot of tear out and all, so I'm just curious on how, uh, how problems are gonna be handled for people who live along that side of the street. So I know you can't respond now, but I'm just kinda wondering how I could get answers to those questions and problems.
Well, I'm glad you did bring it up, and like Mr. Burkmire said earlier, the project will be phased in in several phases, because they are gonna have to take into account the people that live on that street, because you're right, you have to get in and out on Mary Street, there's no way to get out any other way, so I'm sure that as the plans get finalized, the property owners are gonna be advised about how that's all gonna work.
Well, we, we've dealt with that once at least, but when they put the sewer in, it out there, they totally tore that street out. And I'll tell you one problem that the street has, because it's always, I think it come up, is that project got ended late in the year, and I think it was Skip Stevens, maybe, who was, had maybe his job, I don't know, but they, the contractor was refilling that, and, uh, they did, they just bulldozed it in and drove it in, they didn't layer it in, put in ten inches, compacted it ten inches, and that's a very, very deep sewer out there. There was a lot of dirt. In fact, that pile of dirt across the, I couldn't even, is up touching the cable network system on the poles over there. And they, they did not re-compact that dirt top of, in other words, so over the years, it slumps. The cement, it's a nice road when it was good, but it slumped in the middle, so now it looks like this. And that holds water, that freezes and heaves it again. So we need some really good engineering on how to do this job properly with this patch.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any non-agenda items tonight? If not, uh, we'll move on to mayor, city council, reports and communications to the public. Does anyone have anything they'd like to, uh, say tonight?
Yeah, nothing.
I don't either, then I'm glad to be back. Anybody have any communications or announcements or anything they wanna make?
Our committee meetings are this month, so I'm bored the next week.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's city council meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and like I said earlier, thank you, everybody, for coming out in the cold weather tonight to, uh, attend the city council meeting, sing travel songs.